My name is John Janis. I am an employee of the Pawtucket School Department. I have a transition program with eighteen to twenty-two year old students. We do job skills and actually, this was actually a letter that was written by the students the last time this occurred. I just redated it because again, students aren't in session right now. July thirty, twenty twenty-five, Dear Ripta, we are writing to inform you, and again, this was put together by the students last time. We're writing to inform you of our concerns regarding the elimination of upcoming bus routes. Pawtucket School Department Transition Program lies on some of these routes to get to different job sites and access to the community. Students use bus routes seventy-three, seventy-five, seventy-six, eighty, and now seventy-one since it's being eliminated to Job Lot, which students go to, in community connections. We have job sites on these routes. By eliminating these routes, we'll lose our job sites. We currently have a small number of sites that allow students to gain work experiences through local businesses. We have a limited amount of time in our school day. By eliminating these bus routes, it makes it more difficult for us to achieve our goals and takes away our independence. We live in the city. Slater Park offers us a quiet place. We can participate in seasonal activities and events. With the elimination of bus eighty, it would take, we would need to take bus route one to South Attaburra Connect of Thirty-five. This would double the amount of time. The elimination of seventy-six would make it impossible to get to businesses in the Pawtucket Secoak Mass Line. Students, adults, and people with disabilities who live off of Amistad Boulevard and Central Avenue will be adversely affected by these changes. In today's day and age, the goal should be to increase public transportation, to reduce the amount of traffic on the roads, as well as reduce pollution in the air. So, again, I submitted this already. And again, I just wanted to add that about eighty percent of my students will not drive. They rely on the bus to get to jobs, to communities, so on and so forth. This year, there were two students actually who did qualify for the ride program, but that's it. So again, the majority of students, after they do exit, are going to require, or the only way for them to really get around is either mom or dad or Ripta. They want to be independent, very important for them to be so.
My name is Richard Moreau. I live in West Warwick. I'm a paratransit rider. I know you spoke that this was a Ride Anywhere program is secured through General Assembly. I utilize this for doctors' visits and other important meetings. Even though you promised that Ride Along, I mean Ride Anywhere is in the budget, you know, I'm sorry, my Route Twenty-three is for elimination. I fear that once it's eliminated, and if the General Assembly takes away the Ride Anywhere program due to monetary reasons next year, I'll be stuck at home with no way of getting around. Because once Twenty-three has been eliminated, you know it never comes back. So Route Twenty-three is important to me to stay. And also, I was here two years ago, at the hearing two years ago when we were dealing with eliminations and cutbacks. My story two years ago was, I had moved from West Greenwich five years ago because you cut Lake Mishnauk Road out of the bus route, and I was stuck at my mobile home in West Greenwich without any transportation. So I took the big burden in purchasing a house on a bus route in West Warwick. And like two years ago, I testified to save my bus route, and I feel today, same song, different day. I'm trying to save bus Twenty-three because I'm a paratransit rider, and once you take that away, they probably will never return that bus route ever again. Who knows, maybe next year, when the General Assembly might take away the Ride Anywhere program, then I'll be really stuck, and I'll have to burden relatives and everybody else to take me to doctor's appointments and important meetings and stuff. So that's my statement.
Hello. My name is Amanda Flynn. I live in West Warwick, lived in West Warwick my whole life. My cousin Jeff Roy drives bus number thirteen on the weekend. I took that bus to kind of see what public transit was like. I may end up needing public transit sooner rather than later due to circumstances in my life. It was a pleasant ride. I can say that the thing that you said about the ADA compliance, that I saw somebody that was in a wheelchair on the bus that needed to be assisted, so I would say that definitely has to do with that. Also, we saw a nice sign for the WAVE program that looks like it incentivizes employers to work with, you know, people that are going to use public transit. If you ride bus thirteen on the weekend to get to your job, you don't have a way to get there. So that kind of does away with that, doesn't it? I also saw offhand that expenses are going up as a reasoning for this, but are salaries and fringe benefits going up too? Are we taking a look there to see if we can be doing cuts at the, you know, at that higher level? Because the cuts oftentimes come from folks like us who strand us on a weekend, you're talking about bus thirteen as the weekend, so now, maybe I can't go do my laundry. Maybe I can't go to the grocery store. Maybe I can't go take my daughter to Roger Williams Zoo. Wouldn't that suck? Do you guys like experience that? Are you in the position, the CEOs, to have to choose, like having to sit at home on a sweltering day or go enjoy the zoo with your family? Because that's the reality of it, and that's not a fair thing to take away from people. They try to find enjoyment in life, and the zoo is certainly enjoyable. A bus ride can be an enjoyable thing. Get out of your house. It helps with, you know, depression, anxiety, get out, move around. If you don't have that option and you're stuck in an apartment or, you know, whatever the housing situation is, that's depressing. Ripta is pretty inexpensive versus taking an Uber somewhere or burdening your family and saying, hey, can you take me to the store? People don't want to do that. You want independence. And so this really kind of just spoke to me, and I felt like I needed to come out and say something about it. So, yeah, so I hope you guys save this because I, you know, care on multiple levels, so.
Hello. My name is Anna Roy. I'm a wife of a bus driver. His name is Jeff Roy, and I've been with him often on a bus, number thirteen, all the buses too. But I've been with him on Sundays because he drives it on Sundays. And I've been seeing people who are going to work and coming back to work from work the same day. And I see that those people are going to be in a real problem, how to go to work and how to go back home. So I basically am saying more or less than Amanda, and I just wanted to make this point. And I have friends who are using thirteen on Sundays, and they really have anxiety now what to do. And that's all I have to say.
Hi. My name's Donna. I am very worried about the number twenty-three bus, the number thirteen bus, the number seventy-five bus, sixty-six, fourteen, sixty-nine. Now, I don't drive. I rely on buses. I have to go food shopping. I have to go to the doctors. I have animals that I have to go buy their food, and I go all the way to Cumberland to get their food. Now, if those buses are stopped or whatever, the seventy-five, the outline, I forget what he said, but I take most of the buses to go to pharmacies, to doctors, you know, to get out. Like the other lady said, you can't stay in the house all the time because if you do, that's depression. And if they close out, if they cancel the Twenty-three, that's the only bus that we have on that line to go shopping, to do anything. Even if they do something to the thirteen, that's still going to affect us. We're going to be like, West Warwick is closed. We're not going to have no other choice. You know, how are we going to get around? We can't rely on other people. Other people have their own life. We have to do our own stuff. So please, don't stop the Twenty-three, the thirteen, the, and all the others I said. I don't remember, but that's about all I can think of right now. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Tony Page, Anthony Page, actually. But I want to say again with hearing from a lot of different people here, the buses affect working, a lot of people working, you know? The Twenty-three that, you know, my fiancee and I take, you know, is the main bus that we have available to us, you know? Coming from Walmart and BJ's and, you know, the Home Depot, it lets us off right in front of our house, going there right across the street. Very convenient. But if we don't have that, we have nothing, nothing at all, you know? When we get on the bus, we see many people going to work at these places, Walmart, Home Depot, BJ's. Again, you know, if we can't get there, neither can they. They can't get home, they can't get there, they can't work, you know? So many, you know, so many things. They can't get to CCRI, they can't get to all these other buses that they need to get to to go to work, be it to Providence, be it, you know, like, you know, people have said, to Market Basket, you know, here, there, you know, Stop and Shop, so many things. But, you know, you want to cut so many things, but, you know, you, you're telling us, you know, you want to tell us all this, that, wasting time, telling us about these cuts, that cuts. We don't care, you know? Get to the, to the main deal, you know? What's being cut? We want to talk about that. Not, we don't want to hear five minutes here, five minutes there, you're cutting. We can wait a little bit of time for buses. Let's get to what you want to cut completely out because that is unacceptable, unacceptable, you know? People can't put up with that at all. Can't be stuck in the house, you know? Me, myself, I know it, cannot be stuck in the house, need to be out a little bit, you know what I mean? To be socialized, you're in the house, no socialization, that's just not cutting it, you know? I just don't, don't know what to say. You got to get out, you know, you got to be able to get out. You can't just be locked away, been locked away homebound for too long. But I'll let the next person talk because I hear, I hear the chime.
I'm here this evening as most of you know that we're all concerned about elimination of various routes and cutbacks and frequency of route. I rely on public transportation for shopping, medical appointment, visiting friends, and becoming involved in the community. I'm hoping this evening that the representative of Ripta would take into consideration our concern and relay this to the politicians here in the state of Rhode Island and work with us to avoid lots of service. I have to visit my sister in Monzaque. I have to take three buses, and if they eliminate thirteen on a weekend, I'll have to walk from Coventry to the Rhode Island law to get to Twenty-one. So I'm hoping that this consideration will be taken into account before these changes come to fruition. Thank you very much.
Hello. My name's Brian Rice. I live in Coventry on the Route thirteen. Over the past year, both personally and then also in my capacity at the Governor's Commission on Disability, I've advocated for increased funding and continued funding to Ripta, including the funding of the Ride Anywhere Paratransit. And I'm extremely grateful that that's continued for the year as someone who depends on paratransit myself. But I got to mirror what Richard said about, I mean, that's currently, that's only a temporary thing for the year. We, and again, I live on bus thirteen, I, you know, I realize now how important it was to get that through and make sure that that Ride Anywhere exists for people who have no other recourse for transportation. And, and as I have been advocating for the funding of Ripta, I got to say that it has become increasingly frustrating to have this efficiency study when we have these, when we have these cuts in services and cuts of entire routes, and we're told there's no other option, there's no way around it, and yet, over, I mean, a year ago now, Ripta was called on to do this efficiency study, and we still haven't seen that all year, is what Ripta says about, you know, take our word for it, there's no other way around it. But, I mean, it seems to me it would be in the interest of Ripta itself. I mean, the best time to have got that information out there was when funding was going through and being able to say to the public, say to the legislatures, look, this is the situation that it is, and have the facts and be able to show the facts. So, you know, that was the best time to have it out. The next best time to have it out would be now, immediately, so that everyone could see that that's truly the case. Because yes, I would absolutely, very against these cuts and would continue to want to advocate for everyone to be able to have public transportation. Thank you.
Thanks. My name's Randall Rose. I'm from Providence, and I'm a member of a bus riders group, the Kennedy Plaza Resilience Coalition. So I've been passing out flyers about the details of these cuts, just so people know. I think everybody got those flyers. But I know we have a lot of specific concerns about what specific routes are being cut, but really, at this point, Ripta does not have the flexibility on its own to restore any of these routes. Ripta asked the State House elected officials to have enough money to keep the buses going, and they did not get enough money. The money they were given from the state fell short by ten million. And I know if you're ten million dollars short in your budget, there's no way you can avoid very severe cuts across the state. Ripta would love to have lots, would love to keep all these routes. Ripta just does not have the money to keep it going. So the, unfortunately, if we just, it's good people are speaking, but if people just speak here and speak to Ripta, it's not going to make any difference because Ripta itself doesn't have the power to get any more money. The money has to come from the state politicians, from the State House and State Senate, or maybe from the governor moving funds over. So it's really in their hands. And the, if you don't want to see these cuts happen, I would really recommend contacting your elected officials. On the flyer there, it says the phone numbers for the governor, the Senate President, the House Speaker, they're the ones who make the real decisions about the budget. And you should also contact your state rep and state senator. I see a couple of them are here, but I don't have all their numbers on there, but I gave a link on that flyer that showed that, and if you follow that link, you can look up the phone numbers of your state rep and state senator. I know a lot of state reps and state senators, they already get it. They know that these cuts are going to cause really terrible consequences. People are going to be homebound, seniors can't get out of their house, people will have trouble getting to work or getting around the state. So it's going to have really terrible consequences, but really, these decisions are made by the top leaders, the governor, the Senate President, the governors, the House Speaker, and the Senate President. So when you call, it's important to call and ask other people to call too. The more people who call, the better. If enough people call, we will get the money to reverse these changes. But if you call your state rep and state senator, tell your state rep that they should speak to the Speaker of the House and ask for more money. If you talk to your state senator, tell your state senator they should speak to the Senate President and ask for more money because that's how the decisions get made. And these top leaders, the state, the House Speaker, the Senate President, the governor, what they like to do is, even if they know something's important, even if they know some people rely on this, they will try shortchanging the money, cutting back on it, and if they don't get a lot of outcry, then they're not going to give any more money. But if they do get a lot of backlash and outcry, then they'll send the money, more money there. So please try doing that, that's how it has to go. And I know some of these politicians do need to hear the message. I appreciate that Senator Burke is here, I know him a little, and I like him, but I know that when the Senate was debating, should we add this extra ten million back in June, he was one of the people who voted no. I hope he changes his mind on that, so that's important. And I think this is the time to say that. And I know somebody was saying that the efficiency, Ripta had not delivered the efficiency study. Actually, drafts of that entire efficiency study have been in the hands of the top State House leaders for over a month. So that efficiency study was there, was there when the budget was passed, but, you know, they are just experimenting with seeing if they can reduce the funding to see if people really mind or not. You've got to tell them, tell your friends to contact the politicians, and make sure they make these calls soon because that's going to make the difference. I'm hoping these cuts won't have to happen, but we may have to fight it in the State House next year to get this money back. So please speak up, and it is good to join bus rider organizations. I'm in the Kennedy Plaza Resilience Coalition. There's also Rhode Island Transit Riders and Save Ripta, they are good organizations too. Thank you.
Hi. I will try to be brief. I think my predecessor made some very good points, and I'd forgotten what I was going to say. No, first of all, I want to apologize to everyone for asking questions right at the beginning, even though we were told that we should go up individually and ask some of the Ripta people. That's not sufficient in the case of the question that I asked because the people, when, when we go up there, those questions are not going to be presented, they're not going to be on video, and the board is not going to see them, nor will the public have access to those questions. And the question I asked was, considering the audacity of some of these cuts, thirteen, fourteen on weekends, part of the sixteen cuts, et cetera, where there is no other transportation available, and people are in fact going to be imprisoned in their homes, there is no excuse for doing that, and it will lead, I believe, to lawsuits against Ripta because we have a constitutional right to have an income, to earn money, to live, basically. And if the thirteen and the is cut, or the Twenty-three is cut completely, the people along those routes, since there's no alternative transportation, are going to be out of luck. Similarly, on the fourteen, which is only one of, only two ways to get from up here down to Newport, also, the reverse is true on weekends, there's no way of getting between, to from Newport and Providence, from North Kingstown, from East Greenwich, and from other points, Eppingog, et cetera. And again, people are not going to be able to get to appointments or anything. They're not going to get to their, be able to go to their friends or family on holidays, and it's just outrageous. Now, Ripta does need money, there's no question about it. I'm submitting a couple of plans for, you know, raising revenue a little bit, which I won't bore you with, but it's possible to do that. But at the same time, there's no excuse for cutting people off completely when no alternative is presented, you know, or offered to them, or they're, that they're able to use them. And basically, that's it. Money has, and a lot of money is being spent for some of the upper echelon administrative employees, and I'm not saying many of them, many of the, most of the employees from the clericals who answer our calls, to the bus drivers, to mid-management, and probably even some of the upper management are doing very effective work, okay? But we also have had, recently, you may have read, the appointments or employment of various former state employees who are getting full pensions, who have absolutely no transportation management experience, and that money certainly, they're going to be collecting double pensions at some point. It seems to me, you don't pay a lot of money, or you shouldn't pay a lot of money, to people who don't have experience in the field where you need it. And maybe that's one of the reasons why Ripta perpetually has problems, both in scheduling and otherwise. And anyhow, thank you for letting me rant.
Good evening, and thank you so much for the opportunity to speak. I'm Cedric, I'm a high school student from Providence. I use the thirty-three and thirty-four buses to go to school pretty much every day during the school year. Those are getting cut to every forty and eighty minutes respectively, so my commute's probably going to double, but I'm, and yeah, I'm somehow one of the lucky ones in the system. But I wanted to talk because on my way down here, I ran into two people on the Twenty-three. One posted commutes from Providence to Stillwater, Bucks, and Crompton, and they told me that if the Twenty-three was eliminated, they would have to find a new job. The other person wasn't aware that it was being cut and said that, and said, quote, "Guess I need to think about getting another cut," which is, according to AAA, a twelve-thousand-dollar annual expense. That's something that so many people cannot afford, especially with the unprecedented cuts to SNAP and Medicaid. Service cuts are devastating to the riders who will use them, who use them, but it goes far beyond that. What will it do for local businesses trying to hire workers or attract customers? What will it do for congestion on our streets and highways that one's getting any bigger? I want to acknowledge that this is not Ripta's fault, the Ripta staff have done everything that they can. This is ultimately the governor's failure to fund Ripta this session, citing constantly Ripta's efficiency study that got delayed, ignoring the fact that there's already been seven other efficiency studies. The American Bus Benchmarking Group has found Ripta to be one of the most financially efficient mid-sized transit agencies in the entire nation. And, and we didn't do an efficiency study for the fifteen million dollars we gave to Citizens Bank, or the four-hundred-billion-dollar Washington Bridge that has ballooned to seven-hundred, or the thirteen-point-six-million-dollar TF Green Airport highway signs that we built. We could, we could literally stop all of these service cuts if the governor spent less money than the thirteen-point-six-million-dollar highway signs. So, I mean, but even if the governor was right about efficiency, the result of efficiency is this, service cuts that disproportionately affect suburban and rural communities where the routes are inefficient but are lifelines for places that lack the alternatives that urban areas have. I wish that the Ripta staff could make the decision to stop these cuts, I'm sure they would, but the only person who can stop them at this point is the governor. So for the people who came, thank you for speaking. I would urge you to please also call the governor's office and urge him to intervene. For the Ripta staff, I hope that you will listen to the feedback that people have been saying and publicize them to the greatest extent possible to the people who do control the post. Okay, questions are the later. So, yeah, thank you so much for your consideration.
My name is Connie Souza. My greatest claim to fame is that our son, Mark, age forty-eight, with multiple disabilities, was a member of the Board of Directors of Ripta for five years. And that was a very proud thing for us. He now lives on Warwick Avenue, and He now lives on Warwick Avenue, and there are going to be cuts to Route 3. Where, where is that destination cut?
It's, I believe Route 3 is seeing cuts to weekend services.
Oh, it's time, it's not distance.
It'll still be local beach.
Okay. What I wanted to point out is that, when I thought it was going to be distance, I thought it was going to cut out a subsidized housing complex where seniors and people with disabilities Richard, the first person who spoke tonight, talked about the percentage of his special ed students who will never drive. The percentage of people in senior housing complexes, or low-income housing complexes who don't drive, is probably even greater than his percentage, because people who did drive have lost vision or eye-hand coordination, they may have lost enough income that they can no longer afford to drive a car, and those people need to be able to get to their doctors, to their appointments, to their grocery shopping, et cetera. And Route 3 is the only bus that goes down to that part of Warwick. I'd like to make a proposal, and I hope this goes into the public record. When Mark was on the Board of Directors, there were eight directors, is that still the same?
Yes. Well, now it's nine now.
Nine now, that's good, it's an uneven number. He was the only bus rider among those directors. I would like to propose that through attrition, I really want the exec to be able to hear this, and I'm going to take my time back, that through attrition, when you need to replace board members, you need to replace them with someone who rides the bus at least once a week until at least half, now that will be five, are bus riders, so that they have an understanding of the issues that face people who have that as their only source of, of transportation. And I thank you very much.
I'm John Souza, I'm going to use my three minutes. Oh, wrong, wrong mic, sorry. Oh, they're both? Okay, sorry. I live in Warwick with Connie and our two sons, who, or both of whom depend on public transportation. I want to comment on whether this was intentional or just an oversight, but what I observed on your proposal is that large swaths of especially eastern and central Warwick will be without any bus service on weekends, especially on Sundays. When the Route 1 bus, the Route 3 bus, the Route 4 bus are all cut out, those are buses that generally go down that east side of the city. Besides the typical impact that you've already heard about, I've also observed, as a user before I became blind, that there are a number of churches that are along those routes, and there are people who go to church who can't afford a bus, I mean, can't afford a car, and you're also having a different kind of impact, but a definite impact on that population, and I think that that really is probably just an oversight. Another thing that I do want to talk about is that I've ridden the buses for about 50 years since we moved here to Rhode Island, and we're kind of going backwards to the bad old days without, where we had insufficient transit, and we started making some progress in the last couple of years, and now we're regressing. I'm concerned about the regressions specifically around the Warwick area, where people, a lot of elderly people, a lot of poor people who are living in, in public housing are going to be affected. Also, in the southern part of Warwick and East Greenwich, we have a growing medical community, lots and lots of medical services. And again, this service was just added about a year ago, and I'm not quite sure whether these current changes are going to affect that, but I hope that they're not, and if they are, I think we really need to rethink that. My final point, you've heard it many times before, a suggestion, I think these meetings are terrific, but they're poorly timed. These kinds of meetings should be being held during, or just at the beginning of the general assembly session. You, I know, have no control over your budget in terms of your allocation. We, the voters, have a tremendous amount of control, but coming to us a month or two after the budget was settled is too late. Now, we can't do much except for complain and make you feel like you're bad. You're not bad people, but you are doing this at the wrong time. Change your schedule of planning, change your schedule so that when you have to have public meetings, and especially talk about fiscal issues, that we, the public, have an opportunity to organize and to advocate, and to make sure that our elected officials who are supposed to be accountable to our, actually will become so. Thank you.
I'm going to ask some forgiveness, I'm going to insert someone into the side of columns, they have to step away, and I would like everyone to have a chance to speak. Monet Cam?
I'm sorry, guys, thank you for letting me step in. The order was when I leave, I'll just be quick. So I'm a frequent rider on the 13, I am an epileptic, so I can't drive. I saw yesterday that these budget cuts were being proposed, and that the 13 was going to be affected on the weekend. Yeah, I don't know how the, the money gets sorted between Congress, and state, and Ripta, but please don't cut that. I, I can't drive, and I've heard a lot of great people talk about this already. That social isolation is, it's so depressing to be stuck in one spot. So, Senator, please take that into consideration when you make these decisions about budgets and economic choices and such. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Steve Steikos, I live in Cranston on the number one, and I think, sure, that's really a great bus route, that it goes all the way to the airport, and that one group that I'm concerned about is the students who want to go to CCRI or URI from Washington Park in Providence, or Edgewood, or northern part of Warwick, that they will have to take a bus into Providence to catch the bus to URI, rather than going to the airport and getting a bus to either CCRI or picking up the URI bus. So I hope that's looked at. And I also, I have a modest revenue suggestion, which would be that the airport corporation, which always seems to have a lot of money, judging from the huge signs they made on 95, that, that as a condition of a lease in the airport terminal, those restaurants and bars, that they be required to provide bus passes for their employees. And if they won't do it, then they shouldn't get a lease. That's it, thank you.
Hi, everybody. My name is Julie Rocha, and I'm here, just I was at the previous public hearing to explain why maintaining Bus 12X is essential to my daily life. I take the Bus 12X from the Arctic Center and get off in downtown Providence to commute. I don't have a driver's license, and with my daughter right there, they care costs so much, so I'm not in a financial position to afford a car yet. This route, this route is my only reliable way to commute, yeah. Now, the 12X is one of the roads Ripta is proposing to eliminate. The alternative would be to take Bus 23, but they're canceling that too, so how do you expect me to commute? Why is it so difficult for residents in the smallest state in the country to get around using public transportation? Even now, the 12X runs only three times in the morning and three times in the evening, the service is already limited, so if my supervisor says, "Oh, Julie, you can leave early," I have to wait until 4:40 to get my bus. So, and if cuts are necessary, I would understand reducing frequency, but eliminating the route entirely, entirely, that doesn't feel like public, public transportation anymore. If it doesn't serve the public, can we even call it public, public transit? At this point, Ripta might as well stand for Providence Public Transit Authority, because people outside the city are being left behind. Thank you.
Do you mind if I don't use that? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Just like the last speaker, I literally just got off the 12X to be here. My comments are not for you, they are for you. You might remember that I was here two years ago, and you took a whole bunch of names, I think it was about 11 or 12, if I include myself on it, I represent them. Every single one of them is still on a 12X, and they definitely want to be able to get to work, live their lives, I don't need to repeat everything you've just heard from us, the people who are now in your face. I recognize that most of you are not in the position to do something about what we're talking about. You, on the other hand, kind of are as head of the Board of Directors, so, or at least a member of the Board of Directors, if I've got.
I just, CEO.
CEO, well, what I have to say is, listen to us, we all have the same, literally the same story. I've been in this state for 30 years, I've taken the bus from Lonsocket to Westerly, Newport, Jamestown, Saunders Town, everywhere, and I need it. I, I'm so, like I told your predecessor, when I got down on one knee and begged at the Providence Foundation to not take my buses, that I'm a boring non-entity, I don't even have a record. I, I just live in this state and I work, and I want to be able to have the dignity to get to my job in Providence, and not have to scrape and ask for rides, or somehow magically come up with the money to Uber my way to life, and to dignity, and to be able to live like other people do. There's a lot of great ideas here about revenue, there's a lot of great ideas that were shot down in the general assembly to fully fund Ripta this last session. I'm trying to keep my cool, but understand the frustration for people like me who see two years ago, there was $55 million that was proposed to magically repair the Cranston Street Armory, and all it took was one drunken misogynistic racist rant by these two people who magically, one of them disappears into federal government, and the other one's out on medical leave, and this $55 million disappears from the budget. How does that even happen? How can, how can that happen with no hearings about that? But here we are, the people who have no political clout, have to come and do this, and beg you to keep our buses, keep our lives running at least on some kind of most basic human level, to be able to get to do the things, like all these people in front of us, we just want to live, you know? Is that so hard to, is that so hard for this governor to understand? And what I'm asking you is, and people like Patrick Crowley too, like I'm inspired by him, you know, I see him out with his megaphone, you know, and it looks really great. Well, his wife also works for the administration, perhaps they could use that megaphone at his house, or something, or instead of, instead of photo ops, I want Patrick Crowley, people like you to, you've got the clout, you've got the, you've got, I don't, stand up and, and be annoying, like me right now, be loud, be aggressive. There's, there's too much of this hand-wringing, like, oh, I read the Current, I read the Journal, I read all these different articles, and I, it's different messaging, Peter Alvedi saying, "Well, this is the budget we're given with." But then another article, he's saying, "Well, we've done different budgets like this before, this shouldn't be a problem." Well, which is it? And why, if that's the case, why are all these people, well, I haven't even been home yet, I just got off the damn bus, I haven't even lived my life today, I have to come here and, and complain and sound like a jerk? I'd rather be home with my wife right now. Listen to us, please, and just show some spine. I, and I don't, I'm not trying to sound insulting, none of you are in a position, three out of four of you are not in a position perhaps, to do something about this, and I'm trying to single you out, and I'm not trying to sound like an idiot. Please, please, help us, help us, and thank you.
It also seems odd that, it seems like the government's working against itself. I just finished, oh, sorry, Scott Metzler, I live in West Warwick, apologies. I just finished a program through Rhode Island, it used to be through Skills Rhode Island, now it's for CCRI, but it's in Westerly, and taking away the 95X gets rid of the thing for, I was doing process tech, which means it has direct ties to Amgen, and RISE, and a number of different things, but it also, Electric Boat has a place down there. So if you're getting rid of the 95X, you're now getting rid of a lot of the things that actually funds and works for Rhode Island. It feels like you're working against yourself, and if you're looking very short-term for these buses, like, oh, we'll save money here, but in the long run, Rhode Island's handicapping the state itself with the people that need to get these jobs, need training to do these things. Yeah, thank you.
My name is Anthony DeBella. I live in Post Road on the cohesive section of Warwick with my wife. We've been living there a few years, specifically, well, among the reasons we're living there is because Bus Number 14 goes right down Post Road. And my wife and I love to take the bus into Providence, particularly on weekends when there's less people around, and now you're going to eliminate weekend service on that I'm also speaking on behalf of my daughter, Anna Lucia DeBella, who's a special needs young adult, who takes the bus, she used to take the bus down Post Road to North Kingstown, because she worked at the Salvation Army store on Post Road in North Kingstown. Now she works in the Warwick Mall complex and takes Bus 14. I don't understand the logic of eliminating weekend service, in the sense that you're in a downward spiral. I don't know the numbers exactly, but I suspect that if you eliminate weekend service on a line, not just Line 14, but any line, you're going to also reduce ridership during the week, because people will find alternative ways. So what happens? You eliminate service, you reduce readership, you have less money, you reduce service, and down you go, slippery slope, to reducing service over and over again over time. So I, and I think other people who take Ripta on weekends, there are a bunch of service, a bunch of lines that are going to be reducing service on weekends, please at least have service on one day on the weekend. I understand the need for cuts, but reducing, eliminating, I should say, service on weekends on so many lines seems a little bit draconic, if, if I'm using the correct word. Thank you.
My name is Mary Chabano, and leave it up to me to move here to Rhode Island in early May. I live in one of those two manors there on Wakeville Street, manor two and one, they're both eight stories tall. Manor 2 and 1, they're both eight stories tall, and that's a lot of people. CBS is really cleaning up. So I just wanted to mention, I know that there's some seniors here, but, I mean, it's a small thing to offer, but they have the senior five-days-a-week lunches that they'll pick you up at the door and bring you home at the door for free, if you don't mind hitting every pothole along the road. It's like $3 a meal, and they're very good meals. So they have it in Coventry, and they have it in Warwick or West Warwick, wherever it's supposed to be. So that's a little something as far as transportation. And that post office is directly across the street if you needed it when you get there. And what else was I going to say? That time that you referred to about, you know, instead of 30 minutes, it's going to be 50 minutes to wait or whatever, that time in between, somebody sitting there getting paid not to drive? How does that work?
It's, it's the frequency of the bus coming. You can imagine that to attain a 30-minute frequency on a route that must drive longer than 30 minutes, you have to have two buses deployed. If you bring it to 60 minutes, a bus comes off the road.
Somebody's getting paid for that gap that there's no, you know, that the people are...
They're doing other work.
Oh, they're doing other work? And I forgot what the other thing was. But anyway, you know, it's a big country. You don't have to cook yourself up in the tiniest state in the Union. Get out there and see what's out there. Massachusetts is very good. I don't know why these Connecticut, Rhode Island states don't want to communicate with Massachusetts. Massachusetts has a lot to offer, especially with that rail going into Connecticut. It's like he's almost jealous of Massachusetts, so therefore people just twiddle their thumbs. All right, well, thank you.
Hi, my name is Jacob. I currently live in Providence, but I just moved from West Warwick. I lived on Greenwich Ave by the Carpenter Jang for around two years. I wanted to actually piggyback off of what our last speaker said about looking at Massachusetts. I think if there's one thing we need to look at Massachusetts for, it's history. In the 1960s, the state of Massachusetts wanted to propose building a highway through the heart of Black Boston in Dorchester, Roxbury, and Mattapan. And when the state came to the community, they used a lot of the language that you hear in these budget cuts, which is, "What do you want us to do? This is the objective choice, we have to do this." And what the community quickly realized is that this is not an objective choice, this is a political choice like any other. And that the best way to move forward is to remind ourselves that all the choices that are being made, even if they're informed by data and science, are political in nature. What got the ball rolling towards Dorchester, Roxbury, and Mattapan not having a highway go through their neighborhood because they were successful in that endeavor, is the community coalesced around a common alternative solution. They said, "We don't want this", but they didn't stop there. They said, "We want this instead." And so for the advocates in the room, I'm just strongly recommending that we take the time now to coalesce around a common alternative. They know, Ripta knows that this is not going to be popular, bless you. Ripta knows that these, these service cuts are not popular. The governor knows that these service cuts are not popular. What we need to do is we need to say, not just we don't want this, but we want a common solution that works for all of us. So I think we need to get together, find out where we're going to get the $10 million from, and let's propose that as our alternative solution. Let's think about what we are in favor of and not just what we stand against. Thanks very much.
I would just like to congratulate the lady for being the only statewide bus system. And I don't think most people realize how significant that is. And I realize that that makes all of this thing very complex. I am very, very grateful that you have continued the everywhere wide program, I don't remember what you call it, but beyond a three-quarter mile a minute. That is such a boon, especially in light of the cuts that you have to make. And we thank you.
So I'm talking totally out of ignorance here, but I have seen for a number of years this constant discussion about moving the transit center in Providence and looking at all kinds of alternatives. I don't know, but I'm going to suggest that if we've been putting money away to do, to do that, and if we will be willing to face the reality that we're not doing it and we may never do it, couldn't we maybe tap into that money to improve the general service to what does exist? Just a question.